Good evening and welcome to the Selectmen's Meeting scheduled for January 5, 2021. And we'll start tonight's meeting in our customary fashion with a salute to the flag and a moment of silent reflection. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So, happy New Year to all, our first meeting of the new year. Our first two appointments this evening with two chiefs, Chief Brooks of the New York Police Department and Chief Maurice of the Fire Department. Chief Brooks is with us. Good evening, sir. We have your written report. Would you like to take the floor?
So, good to see you all and happy New Year. I look forward to the time when we can be all together physically. It's around the corner right now. I just wanted to start by talking about some personnel moves within the department. I've previously spoken about the retirement of Peter Kelly, who left the department following 33 years of service, retiring at the rank of Deputy Chief. And that retirement was effective on Monday, and that caused some promotions and kind of cascading vacancies. So, to replace him, Lieutenant Christopher Patton was promoted to Deputy Chief. Deputy Chief Patton is a, as many of you know him, a 25-year police veteran, a Marine Corps combat veteran, an attorney, and our accreditation manager. So, replacing him at the rank of lieutenant, Sarah Biden was promoted to lieutenant. She's been with the department about 16 years, I believe, last five as a sergeant. She also is the unit commander for the Metropolitan Law Enforcement Council Computer Crime Unit. And if you look up from the room where you are and you see that set of windows, that's our computer crime lab that serves 45 area police departments, and she now heads up that unit. And oversees a couple of other forensic examiners on our department and those from a few area agencies as well. And then Officer Brett Baker was promoted to sergeant to take her place, and he has about 70 years of police experience, the last four or so with us, and he's a brand-new sergeant. So, they've all started in training as of today and ready to go. And by the way, we also hired a recruit to replace Officer Baker's promotion. And that recruit, in fact, two recruits started at the academy yesterday. And just because police academies being what they are, I like to withhold their names until we get a little bit closer to graduation, but my hope is by the time they graduate, we'll be able to all attend physically and I'll bring them to beach. We've been kind of busy the last few days. I know that the board is aware of it. But it started on the first day of January, New Year's Day. We had a shooting at Woods and Gardens apartment complex. I should point out here, you know, Woods and Gardens is a huge apartment complex, 940-some like units up there, and very well-run in my opinion, relatively quiet. We don't do any more calls for service up there than we do any other place where there's 900 or so families living in an area. But on this day, we were called, we received several 911 calls, of people reporting shots fired. When we arrived, we had a witness on the phone who was talking to one of our 911 dispatchers, Dispatch Rayden, by the way, who did a masterful job dealing with these witnesses who were calling on the phone by 911. And the part of arrival, the officers realized that there was a shooting victim on a third-floor balcony on Landsdowne Way, and the witnesses directed the officers in that direction. Three officers, Peter Fisk, Kevin McDonough, and Gregory Shaw, made their way to the kind of fire-escape stairs that lead up to the balconies. There's exterior access to these balconies. And the three of them made their way up, and Officer Fisk kind of covered the slider. In other words, to protect the other officers from harm, the officers picked up the shooting victim by his arms and legs and ran him down the flights of stairs to the ground, and then called in the No明Fire ambulance, which had staged in the area at our request. They came in and took the victim and took him to the hospital, and he is going to survive. Those were not life-threatening wounds, and he's going to be okay. When the officers swept that apartment, attempting to find the shooter, they found the apartment to be empty. And so, we have a very active investigation that's underway, and it attempts to determine who is involved in that shooting. And we're in the very early stages, and the detectives are working hard on it, and we hope that that will be successful, but, like I said, in the very early stages. Yesterday, we had an episode at Norwood Airport that also made the news. A woman who had been in the vicinity of the airport and had encountered several people got into her car, and according to witnesses, drove it at a high rate of speed, bursting through the gate onto the tarmac surface, not all the way to the runway, but toward the taxiways, and made a turn and drove down the taxiway off the end of the tarmac and into the field that surrounds the airport, through that field and into the wetlands that are there, to the point that her car became partially submerged. She got out of the car and then began to leave the area. Our responding units at the scene, again, Officer Fisk on this one as well, Officer Melanie Conlon, and several other officers arrived at the scene. They tracked her and her dog down. They took her into custody. She was sent for mental health evaluation. She is somebody that we've met before, and I can tell you a little bit of the story by not releasing her name. So, we did send her off for mental health evaluation. However, we're also seeking complaints at the Dedham District Court for trespassing, malicious destruction of property, and a couple of motor vehicle charges in relation to that case. I know that the gate was severely damaged. I've talked to Mr. McGuire, both yesterday and again this morning, about the extent of that damage. You know, because it was kind of that sort of event at an airport, we heard not only from TSA but from CNN as well, wanting to know what happened down there. We are sharing our reports with both TSA and with Mr. McGuire, and we have answered the media queries that surrounded that. I thought it might be a good time, and I know usually we do this in January, just to talk a little bit about where are we with crime and where are we with crime statistics? So, you know, around the country since COVID, which has been with us for nine or 10 months or so, the country has seen fluctuations in crime, and they're not inconsistent with what we're seeing here in Norwood. What people are seeing is some line of fluctuation in property crime, so in a lot of places, house breaks are down because homes are occupied all the time now, and very few house breaks into occupied homes occur. Our house breaks have actually been very, very low for the last few years, and we continue to see very low numbers of house breaks. In other places, commercial breaks were on the rise because there were break-ins to companies where the building was empty, where the business was closed, and we did not see that uptick. So, while break-ins overall were down, other kinds of thefts, particularly fraud cases, were up. And a lot of these fraud cases that we saw increase were along the lines of the unemployment fraud related to COVID. And we saw remarkable increases in fraud along the lines of about 45% increase, but other kinds of property crime were down. We did see an increase in shoplifting, and, you know, most recently, we've seen clusters of shoplifting, most recently at Home Depot. As far as crimes of violence in other places around the country, we've seen slight drop-offs in robberies. We saw that too, down from eight last year to five this year. Sex assaults also down slightly. In big cities, of course, homicides and non-fatal shootings are through the roof. I think in New York City, shootings have almost doubled this year. Of course, we don't have those kinds of issues, the Friday shooting notwithstanding. We don't have those kinds of issues. So, you know, overall, we saw slight fluctuations, a drop in crimes against person, and pretty much a leveling in crimes against property. The other thing we look at, of course, and I bring it up from time to time before the board, is overdoses. And the CDC has tracked an increase in drug overdoses this year, really across the country, which is believed to be somewhat COVID-related, and it could be that some of the treatment facilities around the country that would help people out with substance use disorder are not able to handle those folks, to be able to offer them services. So, we, you know, we saw that too. We had a total of 20 overdoses in 2019. Those went up to 28 in 2020. Now, this, of course, is from an all-time high of close to 50 just a few years ago, so we're still down from that, fortunately. Two of our overdoses last year were fatal, and two of our overdoses this year were fatal. And we'll point out, by the way, in that number of 28, there are several victims that are repeats. One woman overdosed twice, one man overdosing three times in a short period of time, and we intervene with each one of those folks, and in the case of both of those individuals, tried to give them help and get into treatment, but they relapsed and overdosed. So, I did think I'd bring you that, being the beginning of the new year and the end of 2020, to just kind of move with those crime stats. If there's questions you have for me, if you want me to elaborate, I'd have to do that.
Questions, comments? Mr. Ja?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief, first of all, happy New Year to you and to your entire team. Obviously, from the stats that you're reporting through five months, some of these are way, way down, which I know you know. Some of them are way at parking tickets, so you most have in five months what you did entirely last year and way over 2018. Calls for service, obviously, as you described, are way, way up, and some of the others are average, but, like you say, you obviously have been very busy. I just want to focus a little bit on a couple of information about training and what you have done. First, the training that you and your team took about crowd management, constitutional rights, implicit bias, ethical policing, and officer management, I noticed in the follow-up to your section, in your training section, you indicate that all 61 sworn officers attended, which I think is absolutely marvelous. Can you just tell us briefly how you think this does or will impact policing in Norwood and elsewhere from this type of training specifically?
Yes, you know, I am very pleased with the training initiatives that were undertaken at the department, and I know, I think I've talked about it before. You know, when I first came here, and the same was true when I was in Wellesley, we sent a couple of officers every week to a regional academy, and the training there was good, but it didn't allow us to really structure the training around what we were seeing here in COVID, specifically addressing our own folks. And it also wasn't doing anything to develop our folks who we might, who thought might have been potential instructors. So, a couple of years ago, we completely turned our training around, and we now do really, as far as this, where every single member of the department is trained, we really do all of their training in-house. We send officers out to instructor development training. It's a six-day program on how they can be instructors, and then they go to an additional day of training on the particular topic they're going to teach. So, I mentioned Deputy Chief Patton. He and Officer Bishop are our primary legal update instructors. They teach law and criminal procedure and statute law and so forth. And it allows us to hone that training into Norwood and the events that we see happening here, many trends that we see here in Norwood. So, we've got our own officers attending training in-house right here. We're developing our own training staff. And then as far as subject matter, when we see things coming, we train on it. So, you have seen, I think, as a result of the George Floyd incident, his killing in Minnesota, you saw kind of a focus on the duty of officers to intervene if a use of force was in their judgment excessive. We did research. We found a program that had been used by New Orleans Police Department called Epic, which is Ethical Policing is Courageous, that's what it stands for. We sent, we got that program from New Orleans. We exposed a couple of our instructors to that Epic program. We brought the entire department into the building, and we trained on officer intervention. I think a lot of police departments will have to do that in the coming year or so, but we did it right away. As far as crowd control, we did that. It's one thing to teach officers on how to manage large groups of people, but you also have to spend a lot of time, and actually spend more time, on the constitutional aspects of free speech and free assembly and working with crowds and communicating with the crowd. And if you know that a crowd's going to assemble, you don't just show up and try to move them. You communicate with them as early as possible, as often as possible, and whenever you can face-to-face. And I'm not saying that we see the same challenges they've seen in the major cities, but when we've had gatherings in town, I always make an effort to seek them out, to go and talk to them, and whether I agree with the particular message or not, always get across the message. You know, their message is secondary. We are content neutral. What we care about is their safety and their ability to execute their constitutional rights, and that they should find me if they find that that's not happening, and to ask them if they need anything from us, and we move forward. And so, I really think that, you know, how we train, what we train on, and our ability to kind of look into the future, I think bodes well for us, and our remarkably low levels of use of force on the town, I think, bear that out.
Thank you, Chief. In addition, I want to give a plug to Impact Norwood. You also mentioned Minds Matter. It's a program that's been through the Norwood schools and actually now it's merged with, under Impact Norwood, which I think is great for the town. I love the fact that on November 12th, you had a, you attended a conference concerning psychological researchers and attorneys regarding eyewitness evidence, and you turned that right away, and five days later, you talked about that at the high school. I think that is great. Training, just to get the sense of, here are the classes just this past month beside the one that you talked at length about. It was Fire Arm Instructor Recertification, Behavioral Recognition for Police, Commission on Human Rights Trafficking, Drug Driving Enforcement and SAW training. So, for the year, if I use your 60-plus sworn officers, it's greater than 74 hours per officer. That is awesome, and I think the breadth of the different types of diverse training that you talked about, as well as the numbers, shows that we're in it for the long haul and that we take this very, very seriously. I think that's great. I do want to commend, you know, Officers Mahoney and Boguma for the gift card work that they did over Thanksgiving, where they raised over $4,000. They also did one for Christmas. Any update on how well that was, Chief?
I don't have the dollar amounts. What they did over Christmas was kind of a substitute. They had wanted to do a kind of a drive-through Christmas event that would have been similar to the Halloween experience, and this is, all of these ideas come from the SROs, by the way. They were concerned about kids who felt kind of disconnected, and they wouldn't have activities around, around the holidays, but honestly, as Christmas approached, so did the surge in COVID, and we had to back out from what we originally had planned. So, I don't have any financial numbers, but I know that a lot of Norwood residents have really stepped up. And we can share. They're there. Give them gift cards, and then they were distributed by the School Resource Office. So, you're right. Thanks for bringing that. My hat's off to them.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anything else? Mr. Swain?
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Just very quickly, I wanted to say thank you to you and your staff for the continued presence in the school system during this year. I know it's an odd year, and I think being able to still have a presence there has been really great. So, you know, thank you. I commend you.
Thank you very much. I'll pass that on to the School Resource Officer.
Mrs. Donahue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chief, before the meeting started, we had a chance to talk about community policing in South Norwood and how well it was going, and to thank Matt O'Brien. Would you be kind enough to, when you first came as chief, when you were here before and when you first came as chief, you've always been in favor of community policing, and could you just tell the town a little bit about how nice it is when police officers communicate with citizens?
I've said it over and over since I got here, and maybe some of the officers are tired of hearing me say it, but they kind of chuckle at it. I want, my goal is, at some point, that everyone in the town will at least know a member of the Norwood Police Department or at least feel like they know them, and that comes from constant interaction between the officers and the public. And so, the focus around that is obviously foot patrol, and you mentioned Officer Matt O'Brien, and the people down in South Norwood just love him. He's on the beat every day. He knows everybody. He knows what's going on. He helps people solve their problems. If there's a radio call about somebody from South Norwood, this particular issue, it's not unusual for him to come up on the air and lend some information to the issue. He works very hard at that. And we have officers who work the uptown beats as well, who work very hard at that. David McGecon, for instance, on the 4212, Jen Carmichael on the day shift, that really know those beats like the back of their hand. And you know, it's, I know when I go into a shop, because I spend, I try to spend an hour every day on one of the beats, that I go into a shop, and not only do they tell me that I just missed the beat officer, but they call the officer by name, that they say, Jen just left, or you just missed Matty, that the merchants and the officers know each other by name. Or when the officers go to the schools. So, it's not just the beats. It's when we go to the schools, not only the School Resource Officers that have been mentioned, but the School Liaison Officers. We have a different patrolman for every school. And when I go to a school and they happen to see me, that they also want to say, is Officer Rudy around, or is Officer Carmichael, or Officer Hoyle around? That cops in this town strike that. Kids in this town grow up knowing cops by name. And if you think back, if you talk to people in previous generations, or people who've been around a while, and you ask them about policing when they were young, not to point at you, Mrs. Donahue, but I know you think along these lines, and you think about policing back a generation ago, they'll tell you two things. The officers patrolled on foot, and they knew the officer by name, and that is our goal, that officers will patrol on foot. Those assigned to cruises will get out and do foot patrols in neighborhoods, in public housing, in areas where there are shops, maybe that don't have walking beats, and that kids in this town will grow up knowing police officers by name, and that's our goal. And then beyond that, of course, you establish trust, and from that trust comes a flow of information, and we get it all the time because we have a good relationship with the people of this town, and it's because our officers, I think, work so hard at that.
Thank you, Chief, so much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Maloney.
Just one thing, Mr. Chairman. Chief, first of all, nice work with Officers Patton, Lyden, and Baker, you and Mr. Mazuko as well. I think you did a good job there. I think you've got to continue to have a great team. Listen, Chief, once a year, every two years, I ask you this question. For people who aren't familiar with it, could you talk a little bit about NORPAC?
Yes, certainly. So, NORPAC, Norwood, Norwood remains the lead agency in NORPAC. That stands for the Norfolk County Police Anti-Crime Task Force. NORPAC was formed in 1987 through a state grant using federal funds. At one of the times was the Mass Committee on Criminal Justice, now the Executive Office of Safety and Security. And it's, they are the detectives of 17 towns, all in Norfolk County. They're fully cross-designated, so a Dedham detective can make an arrest here, for instance. One of our detectives can make an arrest in Dedham. It allows us to take an undercover officer from Needham, for instance, and use that undercover officer here. If a surveillance advance goes into another town, everyone's fully cross-designated, and so you get officers together as a team. When I was in detectives, and I went in the year before NORPAC in 1986, and you know, you had maybe one or two detectives that specialized in drug work, you didn't have enough people to actually execute a search warrant. You didn't have enough people to follow somebody. You didn't have enough people to have one as an undercover and then have a backup team of four or five for his or her safety. But when we put NORPAC together, now when we go out and do a drug case, it depends on the case. If we're going to do a local buy and it's not going to be too involved, we might use four or five officers from two or three towns. But if we want to execute three search warrants at the same time and we need 15, 18 detectives, we can do that. We train together all the time. All agencies have matching policies around informant control, use of the task force, you know, buy money, official advance funds, and that sort of thing. So, it's been around since 1987, and I knock on wood when I say it, but would never had an officer or a citizen or a suspect seriously injured in any NORPAC operation in all those years, and I think the task force has been very, very effective. Very, very dedicated officers working those violation types, and we've been very successful.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. I think we covered a lot, so I'm not going to add to it, but before we move on, I want to take out of order, from unfinished business, Hackney regulations. Mr. Hajar did a lot of work on that, but he also included several others, including the chief. So, since the chief's here with us now, in case there's any questions, he might be able to answer or participate in, and I'd like us to take this matter up at this time. Mr. Ja, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, what we were tasked with was reviewing the current existing regulations to seeing if any parts of it need updating, which the team did. We had Christina, we had Chief Brooks, we had two of the chief's officers who are handling any Hackney license issues, and we had Town Council Dave DeLuca also involved. And what you see in the packet is our attempt to streamline the process, but to also separate the different processes so that they seem more functional rather than just blobbing everything together. So, we have a set of regulations, and then we have three types of licenses depending on what the individual wants. If you're looking for the business license, you're looking for the driver's license, or if you're looking for a vehicle license. So, all of them have different requirements, so instead of just trying to blend it into one huge lengthy application, we separated them, and if an individual owner just wants a business license, he submits that to the board. If a person wants a vehicle license to operate, whether it's one vehicle, two vehicles, or whatever, that also gets submitted to the board after the vehicle gets certified by the chief's department as well as the sealer of weights and measures in the building commissioner's office. If the person wants a driver's license, they goes directly to the chief's office, where he gets the sign-off to ensure that the individual meets the requirements. There is a required Cory, which will go through the town and end up in the chief's hands for review to make sure that everything is okay. You have a proposed draft of licensing fees, and then we also wanted to spend just a couple minutes on the transfer service, which is the senior center transfer program, where they provide vouchers to members of the center, and they can be used for, sort of like vouchers with the taxicab company. The taxicab company would submit an invoice to the town and get reimbursed. Couple of issues with that is, there are three cab companies that I know of, that I have spoken to, that are at least interested in doing business in town. So, hopefully, we can get at least one of them licensed up and to do business. Our seniors are really needing it. Trying to make the senior program a little bit simpler by not requiring the vendor, the taxicab company, to do surveys, to do this, to do that, and trying to more frequently allow them to submit an invoice instead of waiting till the end of the month, and then they have to wait, you know, a couple weeks to get paid, you know, they've provided that service right away, and they'd like to get paid right away. So, working with Tony, we said we can, they can submit it once a week, and we'll process it. That certainly shortens the timeframe for the vendor, and part of our fee is to try to incentivize the taxicab companies to participate in the program, because it's not mandatory, is to give them a discount off the license for the first year, which we think will help. That's one way, but certainly we're open to suggestions or comments on the draft regulations. We did look at several other different towns to make sure that we have a good document. We weren't going to reinvent the wheel. We had a lot of good stuff in our original document. We just thought it needed to be reformatted, but there were several parts that were updated regarding dress code and stuff like that that probably don't apply in today's environment as they might have, you know, 15 years ago. So...
Okay. Thank you. Before I open up to any questions, Chief, I held you over to go over this. Before I take questions from the board, do you want to add anything to that original presentation?
No, I think I must just summarize it well.
Okay. So, he's here for any questions. Mrs. Donahue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Hisher, in regard to the fees for the cab, 500 for a cab and then first and 200, how do those compare with other towns?
So, in the packet that, not today's packet, but the one that was in your packet of three weeks ago, the recommend- three weeks ago, the recommendation for the business license is $400. And the survey that Tony's team was able to, whoever he could get feedback from, is higher than most. But there are a couple that are at $500. So we were choosing to go slightly less at $400. Some are at $50, ones at $200, which is Walpole. So we're clearly a little bit above average. The same with the vehicles. But our rates are pretty much on par with everybody else. Everyone seems to be pretty much the same. The meter inspections, I think it should be raised. Most people are at $25, we're at 10, as well as penalties. Some people are at 50, some are at 20, one's at 300, believe it or not. We're, we were recommending 25. I think we're at 20 today.
So, thank you. So, next question, please. In regard to the clothing requirements, it says, the last sentence, no sandals allowed. Is that taking it too far? Are we allowed to do that? And is to be that regulatory in regard to dress codes?
Well, technically, we can have any dress code we want. We tried to loosen it up a little bit. If you look at the existing language that's today, it's a little bit more explicit about what they, what they can't wear. We did definitely loosen that up. I'm not opposed to sandals. I think the team just came up with something that said no sandals would rather be.
I was just using that as an example, to, because that seems taking it kind of far, you know? But if it works, if we can do it, okay. You know, if we can do it legally. I just didn't know if it would fly if someone was, made a complaint about it.
No. So today, today's dress code says every dryer, you know, hygienically clean and well groomed and neat, clean and apparent suitability, have to be clean, clean shaven, and hair shall be neatly trimmed. If a beard or mustache, I mean, that's really getting into nitty gritty. I don't think footwear would qualify as definitely nitty gritty, but, you know, we're entitled to change it if we feel it's too techno. But, but Town Council thought that this was fine. When he looked at it, the fact that we trimmed down the whole dress code requirement was a good thing. Again, in today's environment, you just don't see some of these in dress codes today. But what we have is, is probably good.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any motions, any actions, Mrs. Maloney?
Just make a quick comment. I appreciate all the work that you put into this, Mr. Hajar and others. And I think the application process is clearer now. I like how you separated between the business, the driver and the vehicle. I think it's very clear. So I think, you know, in that sense, hopefully, we make this easier for businesses to want to come here.
I hope so, too.
That's the wish of the board. I'd like to adopt these regulations, amend them, say thanks, but no thanks. What's the wish of the board?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
Thank you. Made and seconded to adopt as presented. Nothing further? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief, and everyone else who helped participate. Christina, Town Council? Thank you. Okay. I guess we're ready to move on to Chief Maurice of the Fire Department. Good evening, Chief.
Good evening, Board. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to start off with introducing Deputy Chief John Cody. He's also at the meeting tonight. Unfortunately, this past spring, I was not able to introduce him to the board when he was promoted from lieutenant to deputy chief. So I brought him along to introduce himself. I'd like to say a few words about the deputy. I worked with him when he was a firefighter starting out. He was a young, eager kid, definitely could do some damage in a fire. He was a great firefighter. He had excellent skills. I was glad to see that he was promoted to lieutenant, and he became the fire prevention lieutenant. I think you've probably heard many people around town talk about him and the job that he did, did in that role. I know he worked extremely well with the building department. Any other department in town, he's very well respected and highly regarded. So he was promoted to deputy chief this past spring, so I would like to give him the floor, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman, for a few minutes to introduce himself.
Certainly. Deputy Cody?
Thank you, Board. Thank you, sir. Chief Maurice. Obviously, my name's John Cody. I was deputy chief in June. My primary responsibilities are training and the overhaul of the fleet, mechanic, our new mechanic, Jamie Dry. As always, whatever needs to be done. 16 years on the job, I see my role as to develop the offices and the firefighters, because at the end of the day, they're truly the backbone of what we're trying to accomplish down there. It's our job to lead, to develop, and to promote both like a power and for our town. I work well with everyone, and everyone works well with me. That's a goal that actually was promoted from Chief Reilly, who gave me my start as a fire prevention lieutenant. He says it's about relations. And I followed that up with Chief Maurice. He gave me good advice. He said, always follow up, always go back and circle back in everything you do. And it's truly helpful in your job, particularly in training, because as you're training your firefighters, these are skilled men and women that know their job, and they're going to sniff out very soon what we are not capable of doing. So thank you, the Board, thank you to town. Happy to be here, and I look forward to a long and successful career here in Maryland. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy. We look forward to that as well. Chief?
Thank you. Like Chief Brooks, I'd like to start and just go over a few of our numbers. For the past year, we did 5,380 calls at the fire department. Roughly 3, 3,800 of those were medical calls, and 1,500 roughly were fire-related calls. During the height of the pandemic, basically, the end of, middle of winter to early spring, call volume was down quite a bit. And then when the summer months started, and everyone seemed to relax with what was going on with COVID, progressively, our call volume started to go up. And this fall into the, now the winter, it's definitely gone up quite a bit. In fact, we're almost even at previous year's run numbers. But a lot of those numbers have taken place in that timeframe, from the beginning of summer up until the end of the year. So I just wanted to tell the Board about that. One of the problems of following Chief Brooks is that I always have to, that when he mentions many of the calls that we both respond on. So, but the first one, we did have a basement fire last week on Ridgewood Drive last Tuesday. And it was commanded by Captain Jeff Campilio. He's a new captain with the department, promoted from lieutenant. Basement fires are very difficult fires to fight. Deputy Cody was there as a chief officer. But in keeping with what we're trying to do, is we're trying to give these young officers, and we have many young officers in the department, the ability to get experience. So as the department moves forward, they'll have the experience to correctly fight fires and mitigate any type of emergencies that are going on within the town. So the captain did a great job. Deputy Chief Cody was overseeing him, and fortunately, no one was injured. And we believe that it may have had to do, was related to a dryer in the basement. With the Wickham Way shooting, obviously, the Norwood Police Department did a great job with that. We did have our paramedics in the advanced life support staging, when the police department gave them the okay, the response to the location. Officers had carried out a victim from the shooting. The individual was conscious, but our paramedics did have to treat the individual. He was in serious condition. They were able to give IDs, they were able to give clotting agencies, agents were able to benefit the patient. And the individual was transported to Betis, we don't need him. As I said, in serious condition, I believe that he's stable now. At the airport, we did respond an engine to that. As Chief Brooks had mentioned, the car had geared off onto the taxiway, and had gone quite a bit into the marsh lane, way beyond where anyone really should go out to try to get to the car. So we were able, we were fortunate, we had our ice water rescue suits on the engine, and two of our members were able to go out to the vehicle, basically bring the tow truck cable line out to it, so we could get the vehicle taken care of. They were in roughly about four feet of water when that was happening. So well done by Lieutenant James Murphy and that crew. We have, our new ambulance is now within the station. It's being stocked by our EMS coordinators. We expect to have that in service, hopefully by the end of the month. With that, we also have our ambulance fees. The board had voted to increase the ambulance fees for our services. Those fees went into effect on January 1. So I'm happy to report that that is taking place. I want to mention the retirement of Captain Michael Costello. I don't know if I had mentioned that the last time we were here. Excellent firefighter and captain. So we wish him the best of luck and health in his retirement. And I'd also like to mention firefighter Michael McDonough, who retired on Monday. Michael had almost 40 years on the job. He comes from a long line of firefighters within the town of Norwood and public servants. His father, Charlie, was a firefighter for the town of Norwood. His brother Pat, his brother Joe, and his sister, they were all firefighters for the town. And his mother, Phyllis, happened to be my third grade teacher at the Cleveland School. So, and his nephew, Patrick, is still on the department, so we still have a McDonough there. But congratulations to Michael. We wish him the best of luck. Currently, we have three firefighters in the academy. It's a virtual, also hands-on academy. It's separated by weeks where they do some classroom virtually, and then the other weeks, they actually go to the academy, the one in Bridgewater, and do hands-on training. And we expect those three to be wrapping up soon. And we've also hired four new individuals to become firefighters within the department due to some other retirements that we've had. And we are hoping in February, we'll be able to bring those individuals onboard. Two of the individuals are from Norwood, so I know we have a couple happy Norwood families, that their sons will be on the department. Just a few building issues. Very happy that the facilities group is onboard here for the town. But as you, I'm sure, are well aware, we have major HBAC issues at the building. As Chief Brooks knows, we're consistently having to have a facilities department call our repair company to come and address issues with the heating system, whether it may be 90 degrees in the building, or it may be 55 degrees. So we currently are dealing with those issues. We also have a major issue with the elevator. There's a control panel that's not working correctly on it. The elevator has been down for a number of weeks. We expect it to be out for a number of weeks, if not another month. So the facilities group is dealing with that. Also, we have, the facilities department is working well with our kitchen remodel. And we have a couple firefighters who have backgrounds in the construction trades, and they've been giving their advice and thoughts and working with facilities. So hopefully, we'll come out with a great world-class kitchen here at the fire department. And the last thing I'd like to talk about is good news on the front of COVID, especially for police fire and EMS in the state of Massachusetts, and of course, Norwood. We will definitively be giving out vaccines to the firefighters and the police officers in town next week. We've worked out, Chief Brooks, myself, Sagal Reese, and Stacy Sweetie, to develop a plan to have all of our individuals vaccinated. We have it scheduled out, basically Monday through Friday next week. And we hope to get as many individuals as possible to be vaccinated to protect themselves, which in turn will help protect the people of the town. And with that, that is my report, and I'll take any questions.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Maloney, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Chief, and welcome. Deputy Chief Cody, we look forward to working with you. And I know you'll, I know you'll be doing a great job for us. So glad to have you aboard. Chief, just, you mentioned the ambulance, the new ambulance coming online pretty soon. Just a heads up, Mr. Mazuko and I have been talking about perhaps moving the capital outlay process to the autumn. We're going to confer with the rest of the committee in the next probably 30 to 60 days to discuss that. And one of the things we will be doing is sort of a more comprehensive look at, at, at big equipment in the town, including big rolling stock. So we'll be getting together with you. We'll talk to you about some of the needs you might have, and getting ready to plan over the long term, what we do with some of the bigger pieces in particular. So just wanted to put you on notice about that. Chief Brooks, I suppose you should know that as well, too. But your capital needs are less in number and dollar volume. But anyway, thank, thank you again. Welcome, Deputy Chief Cody, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, with the board's on, we do have two videos we wanted to show the board.
All right. Two videos after questions?
All right. Just a question, either to Tony or Chief. And first, welcome aboard, John. Nice to formally address you, but we've talked often, and it's been great. The new fees, we had talked about the fee at other, sort of like nursing homes, but we weren't quite sure how that might get implemented. They're starting from zero, and now all of a sudden. So any communication with any of them, and how this might be drawn in?
I do know Deputy Chief Hayes is.
Yes.
Go ahead, Chief.
At this time, we did consult with Pro EMS, who is our billing service for the ambulances. And they looked into it, and they were able to accommodate us with that. At the time, Deputy Chief is, Deputy Chief Hayes is currently working on a letter to go to the long-term care facilities here in town, and also any of the private ambulance services, that if they require our services to help or assist them lifting patients, that there will be a fee associated with that. So we do have positive movement on that.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Thanks, Tony.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, Mr. Mazuko indicates we have a couple of videos?
Yes, sir. Give me just a moment.
Hold on, Chief. It's going to be great. Did the chief bring the popcorn?
Sorry, there's no sound.
No sound.
There's sound, it's just.
Who's going to explain what we're looking at?
Because Deputy Chief is the training officer for the department, I'll let him explain.
Deputy Cody?
Thank you. So what this is, is this is considered the firefighter down drill. This will be part of a larger drill I'll talk to you later. You're seeing the members bringing what we call a rig bag. That's the bag that's being derived by firefighter Burton, an officer onboard. That is part of our training officer. And for this particular drill, the increased training money that you are providing. This is the result of that. We have a captain who is able to not be on duty, and this is through training, that's obviously a downed firefighter. Their first goal is to get that firefighter on air. At that point, their air is probably out. What you won't hear is the sound of them operating the alarms and all the audible signals. That is Captain Ben's in the background. He's overseeing. And the reason he's not in mask and gear is he's actually giving hands-on instructions to those members. If they were to get that number on air, they would traverse back up the hand line, and another team would traverse in. The second video, I'll be able to parlay, and it'll begin to make more sense on the overview of what we're doing there. If you would please show the second one. So this is firefighter Matt Defon. Critical to watch his hands. Please watch his hands. This is called the log-out drill. This is if you are lost. Notice that he has a blackout bag over his face, because that is what it is in a fire. You can't see, you actually hear everything. Fire is loud. People don't realize that. This is for a lost firefighter. By following that one pose line, and it's, it's not a mistake, we actually made it look like spaghetti, you keep that hand on, and you slide your tool over, sliding your hand underneath, find your tool, and then you traverse over the line. You'll either lead out, egress, the log-out, or you'll find the nozzle and your crew. What you don't see here filming this is Captain Campilio, who is, as the chief mentioned, the innocent commander of that fire at Ridgewood Drive last week. That That Captain Ben that we took off duty, this is the captain that we were able to call in. So, we were simultaneously running drills at the other end of the floor as the previous row, uh, that you had just witnessed. That's the result of what we're being, we're able to accomplish that has never happened before. And that's the difference between training and practicing. That comprehensive learning cycle, that's uninterrupted, that's training. When a call comes in, that's practicing, and, and that is what we're trying to transition away from. So, that is what we're looking at, and that's what we ran on those two drills. How that will tie into later in the larger drill, we're going to incorporate a downed firefighter. We call it RAP, Rapid Intervention Training. Those firefighters will go in and simulate, as we call in, a three-in-one company, three firefighters and one officer, to handle the responding calls. By taking the crews out of service, we'll actually have a full and complete training drill, where the captain, Captain Ben will stand outside as an incident commander, and who you don't see in this video, is Lieutenant Chris Campilio. He is also another RAP officer, because it's the tenants that will be on that initial line to fight in that firefighter. He will handle the hands-on training and learning portion of that. So, we'll have two instructors while a, a company, which takes our in-service companies out. The chief officers will then go by and make notes. I'll be able to develop along with Dave Hayes, excuse me, Deputy Chief Hayes and Chief Maurice, a standardization program so all four of our crews are doing the same thing. Additionally, we'll be able to take a certification, submit it to DFS, and that'll provide our entire, our entire department with standardizer, with certified, because this is a train-to-trainer program that Captain Ben has, can move, we can actually move up on learning paths to help out other communities. Uh, again, this is all a result of the improvement in our training budget. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
The members are absolutely getting the training that they not only deserve, but have been asking for the years. This is a, it's a tremendous opportunity. And if I could touch on one more thing with the three firefighters in the academy and the four we're hiring, that's in addition to, you have to realize, we just hired four, thank you, last July. That's almost twenty-five percent of our department that has eighteen months or less. So, if you want to talk about the importance of training, now is the time. We are young throughout the entire department, not just our officer ranks. So, I, again, I just want to say thank you, and I have to thank you on behalf of the firefighters, myself, everyone in the department. It's, it's truly making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Uh, I know we often mention it many times, Mr. Hajar brings it up, but we've all brought it up over the years, particularly in the Police and Fire Department, how dedicated you are, and your reports always show every month, uh, the training. And I think, uh, the information we got from Chief Brooks and from this presentation, we also can see that we don't just keep doing the things we always did, we're always looking for new and improved and better ways to assist our staffs and get them well-trained. So, thank you all for that dedication and the work you're doing in that area. We all, we all know it's important, we all appreciate it. Any questions or comments at this time? Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to new business. The first item is talk about remote town meeting, and we have a letter from the town moderator, and I see that he has joined us as well. So, um, would you like to say anything at this time, Mr. Hearn?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I, I really don't have anything to say. I, uh, you have the letter that I rotated as of yesterday, and I'm available to answer questions or engage in discussion if the board wishes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we've been pushing and working towards how to hold this remote town meeting. Uh, Mr. Mazuko, a number of staff people, Attorney DeLuca, uh, and others have helped identify a platform and to try it out and to get some training and to be scheduling to move forward. There are a few things that aren't yet decided, we're developing those as we go along, but they will be before a town meeting, and they're not, in our opinion, significant enough that they'll cause any problems, that we have to wait to hundred percent resolve them before we call a town meeting. We had indicated trying to call a town meeting in January, we didn't quite make that. It looks like, uh, up to the board's decision and vote, but it looks like we can have a town meeting as early as February 4th, we'll be ready, that's a Thursday. Um, we are planning on, again, with approval of the board, the warrant being the same as we had planned in November, plus two items, which we took care of it in November and the other warrant that evening. And that has to do with the recreation department's elevator and the fire department's mechanics' equipment. The town manager does have two additional articles she'd like to add in their place, and item seven on our agenda tonight, if the board wished, could be added, but otherwise we'd consider the warrant closed. We may change the, we're working with the moderator and the planning department in particular about possibly changing the order of some of those articles as they appeared in November, but the content will be the same as you saw in November, other than what I just mentioned. So, we'd basically consider the warrant closed and, after this vote, again, with your approval, um, and sign that at our meeting next week. We've normally been going every other week, but we have several matters coming up that it looks like it'd be advantageous for us to meet next week, and the plan would be to take the following week, which was immediately following a holiday, Martin Luther King Day on Monday, and taking that week off, but meeting next week. So, with that, we'll take any questions or comments from the members on this issue. Oh, before we go much further, um, and before I forget, uh, the moderator and I had also signed the letter sent out, asking town meeting members to, uh, send in their email addresses to the town clerk's office, get them registered. It's vitally important to be able to participate. As of a couple of days ago, we told it all but eighty-four had registered, and I just want to take this time, if anyone's watching or sees reruns of this meeting, town meeting members, please get your email addresses into the town clerk's office, as it's really essential to have a good town meeting and for you to fully participate. Questions, comments? Mr. Hajar?
Yeah, just a question, Mr. Chairman. So, um, have we, or are we typically not, um, informing other boards about this is the date and if you want any warrant?
Yes, no, yes. No, we have been talking for months that we're going to have this town meeting.
Yep.
And no one's come forward.
Okay.
With anything. The manager, of course, would be in contact with his committees and so forth, and knows if nothing else, it's pending and important right now. So, we just want to keep this moving, and basically, other than a couple of changes I mentioned, do what we intended to do last November.
And Tony, you feel, uh, Mr. Manager, you feel that technology-wise, will we all set for the 4th?
Yeah, we are consistent with the moderator's letter. We've purchased the Zoom platform, which is what other towns have used, uh, the Zoom webinar platform. We've also contracted with MAPC, which is our regional planning agency, to provide some technical support and training support. They did the same thing for the towns of Dedham and Stoughton. Both of them were able to successfully have their town meeting, so we figure by following the same model, we shouldn't have a problem here in Norwood.
And is there, is there any, my final question, is there any fallback position for individuals that somehow their computer is broken, or I, I don't know, how do people, either with a broken computer or even without a computer, which I can't imagine?
Yeah, we're still, we're still working out the final details, but we intend to try to accommodate and, and help those people out the best we can.
That's awesome. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? And we have then a motion to accept the request that the, the call a town meeting for February, special town meeting for February 4th. So moved. Accept the moderator's recommendation that it be a remote town meeting. We'll work on all the technical and legal notifications that need to be included in the warrant, and hopefully have that all ready for signature next week. So moved?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hearn.
Thank you, everybody. Happy New Year.
And to you, sir. Okay, next item is MS Walker. We had a, um, letter from MS Walker, basically with a lot of information on it, pages and pages, and bottom line is it requests the selectmen under one of our general bylaws to take some action beyond what may or may not be done by the zoning board in this matter. Town council had prepared a letter, we have a copy of it, it's dated back to December fifteenth, 2020, uh, which was addressed to, uh, the attorney for MS Walker, has not been sent, and we're looking for confirmation or approval from the board to send this letter. Uh, basically, it says that they're aware of all the actions the board has taken, and writing a, a comment to the zoning board, and that he's recommending to us that it would be, that we're going to continue to monitor the activity on that site, but also, and their particular request, uh, for us to take some action under Article twelve of section ten of our general bylaws, that we look into that further by hiring an engineer to, to, uh, a little review of all their maps and reports and the actual current conditions, and let us know, in his professional opinion, what maybe we could or could not require under that bylaw. And then at that time, we would, um, you know, take the appropriate action to accept or reject that approval, uh, that suggestion, but, uh, we need some proper response to uh, MS Walker's request. Mr. DeLuca is here with us, I see. Attorney DeLuca, would you like to add anything or correct me on anything, please?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, no, uh, all well-stated, uh, you have a draft of my letter, uh, that is updated now, uh, from the middle of December, uh, and my advice to the board has been all along, uh, that we have authority under the general bylaws, but you ought to be guided by expert opinion on the proper course to take, to satisfy that bylaw. Uh, and, you know, that expert opinion could be in the form of, uh, advice from our own, uh, engineering or DPW or a, an independent engineer. Uh, that, uh, was my proposed response to the long letter we have received from MS Walker, uh, that outlined all the various grievances that they had with respect to their neighbor, uh, and, uh, the actions that were taken by UAV affecting their property, which by and large is a civil matter as between the two, uh, the two neighbors. Uh, but, uh, that said, uh, there is the, the bylaw, the general bylaw that gives the board of selectmen specific authority relative to excavation and fall protection, uh, and my advice has been to, uh, to get some expert assistance on, uh, the proper, uh, remedy to deploy, uh, in this situation.
Thank you. Uh, I, I have referred to, I think, a special outside engineer, if you will, even though Mr. Ryan, I'm sure, would be professionally competent. This could lead to other matters, and I think it would put the board in a better, best position to have an outside separate third party looking at this, rather than a in-house engineer. Just think that's advisable from a legal standpoint, if it should be needed. Hopefully, it won't be, but it would be protected a little better if we have taken that kind of action. Uh, any questions, comments? Mr. Hajar?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, um, we're still hoping, well, we know that the ZBA is making a decision tonight. I understand there's a series of conditions.
Well, we, we had, if I might, we had, um, suggested to them a peer engineer review, and actually, at least myself, was hoping that they would have taken that action, and we could have piggybacked on that for, for the information we need for answering this matter, but they have chosen not to do that. Um, and.
But we also don't know what they, what they voted on, so isn't it a little bit premature to say, we're going to hire someone, we don't know the conditions that, I understand, have been, um, approved with, uh, input from both Mark Ryan and Paul Halkeos, because they both submitted memos, which I understand were taken into effect as part of their decision issued earlier tonight. So, my only concern is, since we're meeting next week, can we all digest exactly what was issued for decision in the conditions? And then if we find that we specifically need specific outside expert engineering to do A, B, C, and D, we can do that. I would just hate to see that we vote on something when we don't know what the conclusion of what the ZBA's decision is.
I suppose we could do that. I wasn't hesitating to do it myself, because we heard, or at least I heard, um, the members of the zoning board speak at the last meeting, and their, uh, discussion of putting conditions on seemed quite general, and the strongest thing they were going to do was make the applicant come back a year from now with specifics. We don't have a year to wait for those specifics, but I suppose, you don't see any reason why one more week would harm, or do you know any action the zoning board took tonight by any chance?
Are you, are you asking me, Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry, yes, Mr. DeLuca.
Yeah, yeah, so I actually just came from that meeting, uh, and, uh, they did vote the special permit request. Uh, there were a, a number of conditions, uh, one of which was that, um, uh, the applicant is going to be required to rehabilitate the property of MS Walker, uh, as one of the conditions, uh, of the special permit that was granted. Um, there were a number of conditions that were co-opted from Mr. Ryan's, uh, recommendation, I think one of which was, uh, the fall protection. Uh, and, uh, yeah, we're likely to see some very specific conditions in the permit, um, relative to, um, uh, the fall protection, uh, for, uh, the excavated property. Uh, it, and it is a standalone provision, however, still with, uh, the board of selectmen, uh, as authorized by the general bylaws, uh, to, to set, uh, conditions in that regard. Uh, it does make some sense to see, uh, what it is that the, uh, the, the zoning board of appeal comes up with specifically, um, but I just want to assure your board that you do have independent authority based on, uh, the general bylaw.
Thank you. Wish to the board? Mr. Marney?
Uh, I thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree, Mr. DeLuca, it's imperative upon us to make a response. I think you're right. I like the letter, I think it's well drafted. Uh, I'm, I'm happy to wait a week if, if my colleagues agree with that, just to see this specific provision that we are, uh, require or that we want to pursue, which is the, uh, engaging of expert assistance for design and implementation of full protection barrier system. It, it, so we, we don't know if that already is a condition of the board of appeals' decision tonight, is, or the permit tonight. Do we, do we know that? I don't want to be redundant on it, I guess, it's a.
Yeah, I, I don't believe there was a specific condition relative to, uh, the, um, retaining an expert for purposes of designing a fall protection system. Um, I don't recall that being a specific condition.
Okay. I think the recommendation, correct me if I'm wrong, if you have different information. I think the original recommendation by, uh, Mr. Ryan was that they be required to put a permanent fence on their property, but that's kind of their, their, their response to that was they can't do it, uh, at least at their first hearing. I don't know if they've changed anything. I didn't hear anything different at the second hearing, and I don't know how that will affect the zoning board's, uh, decision, but as I said, the last thing I heard was pretty general from, uh, Mr. Murphy on the zoning board.
I would just like to see the specifics that were taken from both Mr. Ryan's memo and Mr. Halkeos' memo that were specifically adopted to address some of these issues, and then we can determine as a board whether they've gone far enough. And if not, I wholly support hiring some independent, but we may find that maybe they accomplished seventy-five percent of what we wanted, and we don't need to scale up with an outsider for a hundred percent, maybe it's twenty-five percent. I just think we're in a area where one more week, we can sort of glean what the specifics of what our department head's input provided for the ZBA to accept, and then see if it meets the needs of, of the town, that we're satisfied, or whether we want to go further. I have no problem going further.
Do you know how long it takes? Will the, would the information actually be available to us next week? Would the orders be written up?
Yeah, that may be, uh, difficult. Um, I know that, um, there was an agreement between the applicant, uh, and the zoning board to extend time for the written decision. It may not be actually produced, uh, for another, I don't know, fourteen to twenty days. I just would remind your, your board that, that the, the matter before your board is simply whether or not, and to what extent, to respond to the letter we received over a month ago, uh, from MS Walker. We have a proposed response, that one of the items in that response is whether or not the board chooses to pursue, uh, some expert advice, uh, on that item, which doesn't need to be decided tonight. Uh, the only matter to be decided tonight was whether. The only matter to be decided tonight was whether or not to send the response.
Right. That's what I was going to suggest, that we send the response and we kind of go slow for a couple of weeks on whether we actually go forward with the recommendation.
It has been recommended.
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, so made and seconded, Mrs. Donohue?
It's my sincere belief that we should get expert advice in this regard of engineering. And as you know, Mr. DeLuca, the usual time for submitting a response is how many days for a written decision? Is it, how many days under the law?
It's for the zoning board to-
Right. File a decision.
Fourteen days.
And then, and now it's been extended to what?
To 28 days.
To double the time. And this is an exceptionally particular area of engineering. It has to do not only with the Walker property and the Federico property, it has to do with the entire wellfields and the protection of the wellfields. And this has been, this is the whole, even though they may be contaminated now, it may be a future water source in the future. And I think that we owe it to the future generations to get some expertise, a special expert engineer that will take a look at this picture. We've had other cases in town, say, for example, in a parking lot. Oh, the engineering department said we should put up signs. Well, there are other issues, too. And I think that we need to protect the area. And I think that, yes, we should send the response, send the response now, but I think that we should seriously hire a special engineer.
All right, so based on the last comments, we have a recommendation to allow our town council to send the response, change the date on our behalf to MS Walker, and then we'll, in the future meetings, decide to proceed or not to proceed or how to proceed. So, motion to authorize council to send the letter draft that we received on December 15th.
So moved.
All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeLuca.
Yep, I'm good about it right away.
Thank you. We have anything else that concerns you directly tonight? No? Okay.
I don't think.
You're off the hook.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Okay.
Number three, Chateau Restaurant in Norwood submitting an application for change of manager from Kerry Scott to Jason Sweet.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve is a second, made in second, I think further. All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. Travis Fawley, Superintendent Recreation submitting for approval of the board a request to declare the Chevy Tahoe as surplus property. Mr. Manager, I have one concern with his letter.
Sure.
That it has no value. It has at least a few hundred dollars value, it's junk metal. There is some value. It may not be a value that requires us to bid it and sell it rather than just get rid of it, but there's some value, so it just takes some exception to no value.
Sure, I think what Mr. Fawley was referring to is this was an engineering vehicle that was cycled down to the rec department, and I think currently engineering's newest vehicle is a 2014 and the other one's a 2011, so it's a vehicle that's effectively dead and worthless other than, you're right, it always has some value, so we can assign a value of $500 to it at the board.
No value for the department, that's for sure, or any other department.
Move to declare a surplus.
Move to declare a surplus, second. All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. Mark Good submitting your approval of the board a request to declare, oh, I'm sorry, that's the wrong item, bond authorization to issue refunding of the bonds is indicated that this has to do with light department bonds and that the savings over the life of the bonds could be $1,279,593, substantial savings over time. This would, the motion would be that in order to save interest costs, the treasurer is authorized to provide the seal and issuance of bonds under General R44, Section 21A to refund all and any portion of remaining principal of the redemption premium and interest on a town's general obligation bond, Series B taxable, dated August 15, 2009, and that for this purpose, the treasurer is authorized to provide for the preparation, distribution of a preliminary official statement, provided, however, that no bond shall be issued under this vote unless and until the final interest rates and other terms of the refunding bonds are approved by the board. Just give them authorization to proceed and attempt to make some savings for us. Made, seconded. Anything further? All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous.
It's great savings.
Number six, Director of Office of Leasing State is notifying us that they are looking for, what is it, 5,000 something square feet of space in the Norwood general area if we had anything we might be interested in talking to them about, so it's information to file?
So moved.
All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. Number seven, I mentioned briefly when we were talking of the town meeting, whether or not to add this request. It's a request from John Shelby of Rojo's on Route 1, new business that will be created this spring, opening called Cravings to Go at 69 Providence Highway. He's requesting a special, an article on the town meeting to ask town meeting to support a filing to the legislature, a special retail license for that business. You have his request, I believe, and also just this evening, we got a letter signed by both State Representative John Rogers and State Senator Michael Rush stating basically that they support it and in fact, asking us to include this in the next special town meeting warrant. Any action by the board on this request?
Move to include in the warrant?
Move to include in the February 4th warrant? All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous.
One abstention.
I'm sorry?
One abstention.
One abstention. Mrs. Donohue abstained for nothing with one abstention. Thank you very much. Mr. Mazuko, you're listed next here for a couple of items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item I have is for the board to discuss what, if any, rental relief you would be willing to provide for our two primary rental properties, the OCC property and the print shop property. As the board knows, you approved a 75% reduction for the last quarter and was decided then that this would be brought back each quarter to the board to look at as we're still dealing with the fallout from COVID-19. Therefore, it's presented to the board for whatever decision you may make.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think it's a good idea, but make a motion to, what would be the term, continue, to continue the arrangement or to continue the rent relief we've offered in the last quarter, which is what, a reduction of about 75%?
For three months.
So, we're going to collect 25 cents on the dollar for the next three months for the two tenants.
Second.
Made in second, anything further? All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. Mr. Mazuko, number two.
Thank you. Next is a request coming through the Recreation Department to install a disc golf course behind the Coquely Middle School. The board has the map of it. Disc golf is sort of similar to frisbee, if you, for those of you who aren't familiar with it. It's a small project, the board, the department can absorb it within their operating budget, and Travis has gone through the steps of speaking to the school department and would like to be able to proceed this spring.
Okay. I talked to you offline before, the only question I have is that I didn't know what disc golf was, and I've already had a couple of people that saw the posting of our warrants saying, "Are we building a golf course?" This is not a golf course. This is, in simple terms, people walking a path, getting some exercise, and when they get to a certain spot, trying to throw their frisbee into a barrel or something. I think it's a little more involved than that, that may be a little simplified. Mr. Maloney tells me the sport's growing in popularity and even saw something on TV about it just recently.
World champion, Mr. Chairman, this is a baby boomer activity. You are a baby boomer.
But the only concern I have is that this course is along current trails and walkways that many people use for general exercise, many people use for walking their dogs while they're out getting exercise, and that we're guaranteed that this isn't going to displace those people, that this will still be open, these walkways and trails will still be open to all the residents.
It will be, we're not closing any of those paths. You'll probably see additional people on the paths, but we want people to still use them for walking, for running, and for dog walking.
Dog walking, of course.
It's a nine-hole course.
Yes, I think it's a great new activity. I mean, certainly, we can monitor to see if people are just whipping frisbees around with other people antagonizing the walkers, as you say, but it's certainly worth trying it out and letting it go. I think it's a great idea.
Very low cost and very low maintenance to add an amenity.
So moved. That's the motion to support by Mr. Hajar, seconded by Ms. Maloney, I'm sure.
Do a second, what's worse happens.
Anything further? All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. Mr. Mazuko, you're on a roll.
Thank you. Number three, discussion of using Westover Parkway, the park area there, for youth biking. And I do want to apologize, it is on your agenda as Shattuck Park, that was my mistake. I had Shattuck Park on the brain for some reason. But you have a letter here from some residents, some young kids were biking in the Westover Park area, they wanted to be able to play in there. We did get one concern from a neighbor about whether or not they were involved in driving through wetlands or anything like that. We're talking about non-motorized biking. It's actually quite a cute story, the conservation agent went out there and she met with a group of kids and explained to them where wetlands were and where they weren't and how to bike in a way that's helpful to the vegetation in the area and to not make sure that they were destroying it. The kids would like to ride their bikes in the area, we would like the selectmen to grant permission, and you have a letter here from three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 kids ages 12 and under in the neighborhood requesting that the selectmen approve that, and I certainly support that recommendation.
There is jumps and things they're talking about, those mounds of dirt versus coming in with some wooden ramp or what is it?
It's the things kids would sort of play with in the woods, if you will. It's nothing permanent, would be allowed, they're not going to be putting any large structures in there, we're not turning into a bike park or anything like that. It's kids riding their bikes through the woods that sometimes are going to want to go up over a hill. Holly has explained to them the value of needing to make sure that anything that gets disturbed while they're there gets changed, they won't be putting any rock piles or anything like that. Be a carry-in, carry-out.
Okay. Anything else, Mr.?
I was just going to, I think it's great that they're doing something different than sitting in front of Game Boy or who else and doing it.
Game Boy.
Pack, no more Pacman.
No, no more Pacman, although you can come to my house, I have a retro. I think it's great that they're trying something outdoors that's probably a lot more refreshing than just sitting in front of the TV or always doing something inside, so.
I guess my only question is, does it need our permission?
You are the Parks Commissioners, and just to clarify, that bike riding is allowed there? Non-motorized bike riding is always appreciated.
Well, as long as it doesn't lead to juvenile delinquency in our town.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney.
I take that as a motion and a second to approve the request. Anything further? All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. Mr. Mazuko, you did very well tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll quit while I'm ahead, I'll have one short announcement later.
Thank you, sir. Additional new business we have from the town clerk, Mary Lou Folon, notification that's been notified by the Chair of the Board of Trustees that they have vacancies caused by the untimely death of trustee Lee Larry, who will be working with putting that forward, and they're looking for the two boards to get together and make an appointment. Nothing further on that, we'll just leave that with the Chair to work on the details of moving forward of that matter. All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. Arusa Materials Corporation has submitted a check that they promised to submit to the town annually, this year in the amount of $28,414 based on the annual tonnage, and it's basically intended for roadwork repairs in the area of their plants. Mr. Mazuko?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board may remember when this came before you last year, as it does every year, I believe Mr. Hajar had asked a question about would we want to do the road and instead of saving the money towards the bridge as we had been doing, and my response then with Mark Ryan was that absolutely no, we must save the money for the bridge. That being said, Mr. Ryan and I have continued to take a look at that road, and that bridge is going to last a lot longer than the road, and we do believe we'll be bringing a proposal to the board in the next couple of weeks to use some of the money in this account to in fact, do a good job on the road there, Pleasant Street that needs to-
Is this now the third payment or just the second?
No, I think it might be the fourth.
Third or fourth? Okay. So, you must have a good amount of money there, then?
Yeah, we think there'll be sufficient funds there, or we may need to add in some of our Chapter 90 money, but we wanted to save it to make sure when that bridge came to get done, this bridge is very expensive, we would have all of that fund available or a lot of it. Maybe now we can at least have the design money and hopefully state grant money because that road is not going to last as long as the bridge. So, what's the point of just putting this money over here and spending the money over there?
And we don't have to spend Chapter 90 money on it.
That's right.
Okay, so we'll take that as a thank you for receipt. Probably should technically accept it as a donation under 44A for the, 43A, for the purpose indicated.
So moved.
Seconded, all in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. Cemetery deeds for signature of the board?
Move to sign.
Made and signed, approved to sign, all in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. Hacking regulations, we already had and approved. Horizon Files TV submitting notification of change to Files TV programming, ongoing, continuing. Information to file?
So moved.
All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. A Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program has submitted a copy of a letter they sent regarding taxiway sea realignment and runway safety area project. They're basically saying they haven't got enough information to comment on that project. Any questions, comments? Information to file?
Just a question, so, Mr. Manager, what's the next step as far as, they're saying that the submission wasn't adequate enough to address some of the issues that they believe need to be addressed, so is that something that we're hiring, or the airport's hiring a specific consultant to deal with this and resubmit?
Sure, so as part of any major project in an airport area or an environmentally sensitive area, the first process is, and we use consulting engineers, they send letters to a number of different state agencies and say, "This is what we're proposing, what does everyone think, and what information do you need?" All of that information then comes back and gets aggregated, and then the project manager, in this case, the consulting engineer, that says, "Okay, this division needs this, this department needs this," and then we begin assembling what information is needed, determine if there are additional environmental studies. So, it's just part of that process of we have to contact them, agencies, for them respond with, they may need more information or they have a challenge. That then determines how we go along the project. And I do believe after speaking with Mr. Plasko, we'll also have Mr. McGuire here next week if his schedule allows, if the board has any specific questions about this runway project, but it is just par for the course with a standard project in an environmentally sensitive area.
Thank you. I think it's good to get them in, explaining some of these things, particularly the public care of them, how they have different ideas out there, it's good to hear from the source. Also related to that was suggested that we, by Ms. Elaine, that we have a health director in. I've spoken to her and she's going to come in and speak to us, too, particularly about the COVID situation, vaccines that'll be starting up and keeping us updated on some of those items, and that I think will be at next week's meeting as well. Okay, so that's just information to file. All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. So, we have Public Employees Retirement Administration submitting notification to our retirement board that's required fiscal year 2022 appropriation of $6,1,729. And I'm sure that's already been copied to the accountant and everyone that needs to know that.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, it's a somewhat larger increase than normal in the retirement allocation for the town, but the reason is, is that the retirement board is working towards a better discount rate to more accurately reflect the anticipated rate of return.
Okay, so that'll be taken up at budget time, this information for budget purposes. All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. Department of Environmental Protection Waterways Regulation Program is submitting notice of a permit application pursuant to Chapter 91 regarding Trap Hole Book Restoration Project. Any questions, comments on that? If not, we'll take that as information. All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. Mr. Mazuko, any further update?
Just two, Mr. Chairman. As Chief Maurice had mentioned, we will begin vaccinating first responders in Norwood next week. And I think it's important to note a few things about the overall vaccination process, and I'll leave more of the details to Ms. Reese next week. We're able to do first responders here in Norwood, and Norwood's Health Department is actually assisting in the coordination of vaccinations for 10 communities in our region. We're a member of a regional health collaborative, and it was our Health Department that sort of stepped up and said, "We can coordinate this for the region to ensure that our region can take care of our first responders in-house." So, we will be doing police and fire right here in this building starting next Monday. And it's kudos to Segala and her team for being able to make sure we're able to do that in-house. We don't have additional information about when people in later phases are going to get the vaccine, or I should say, where they're going to get it from. We are at the mercy of the state as everyone else, it's sort of, we get notice about one phase at a time, so that information will come. There is a state website you can go on and see where you think you fit, but we have no additional information beyond what we're given by the state, which is, we have the responsibility of getting our first responders done starting next week, that should take two weeks. At some point, the state will release more information, but we are at the mercy of the state releasing that information.
Let me interrupt you for a moment, that reminds me, this room will not be available to- to us next week, yet we're looking at having a meeting next week. So if we don't find another adequate room to set up the way we are, and those options are quite limited for equipment and so forth, we may be having a virtual meeting. So we will not be meeting here, and we'll see what we can do between now and Thursday or Friday when we have to post the meeting, if we have another locational, whether it has to be virtual. Question?
Yes, just a question. So has anyone to date indicated that they will not accept the vaccine?
There's been no formal acceptance or ask. What we're hearing, both internally and around the country, is people saying this or that. It's a matter of we haven't, we release our sign up a little bit later in this week. We'll know then if there's anyone who elects not to. They do have a few options, if you're a first responder at least, because the state is setting up a couple of bulk sites. So we're going to try to get it done here, because that's the sort of most efficient. They will have the option of going to Foxborough. We'll have a mass site set up, and there's a few others set up. I think Fenway and the Big E and a couple other places in the state. So we haven't heard yet, but we're not formally able to ask. We're just able to put out the information and have folks sign up. But we're hopeful for a high compliance rate. And then the only other announcement I have is that Jim Collins is retiring this week.
Jimmy, that's right.
This week. This is his last.
We told in early January, and we're there, aren't we?
We are. We've been continuing to try to.
How many years?
It was, let's see, he's at 46, I believe. He and Bernie tend to go back and forth as to who actually started first. Jimmy started as a co-op student with us.
I'm betting on Bernie.
Yeah. Although, there's a discussion about part-time, part-time, and C to worker. So it's a wild argument. Everyone gets into it over a few months, but over 45 years of service to the town in Norwood, he was going to retire last February, right after the new building opened. With everything that happened with COVID, he wanted to stick on and stay through until we were a little bit more stable. So we are certainly sad to see him go after a long, long career with the town. He will be around, so you'll still see him around. There's a small sort of socially distant and drive-up ceremony, if you will, that will send the information to the board, but we're planning a more formal party this summer when such things are allowed again. And I hate to leave everyone guessing, but I will have an announcement on his replacement next week.
And as a minimum, we should put together some kind of, thank you, some kind of documentation, plaque, whatever is appropriate, especially for those years of service, and we'll see if we can do more in the summer, as you suggested.
Absolutely.
And that is all I have, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Thank you. Any comments from the board members? Any, Mrs. Dunn here?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first of all, in regard to Jim Collins, not only was he a longtime employee, but the quality of his, of his work. All of these years, he's never faltered. He's never been involved in anything that wasn't correct for the light department, for the personnel, for the future of the light situation in the town of Norwood, you know? And he and Malcolm McDonald and Bill Cates, and what a crew. And now when the lights go out in Norwood, they're out for an hour, and they go out to Cape Cod, they're out for two weeks, you know, and here we are. Thank you, Jimmy. Appreciate it.
Yeah, Kate and McDonald trained him, and he still turned out good, didn't he?
One of the items that I wanted to bring up tonight is about the light department. So I thought of this idea, and I'd like to ask the board what you think about it. In South Norwood, on Moore Street, on Short Street, there is a light department storage area, and it's kind of an unsightly thing. There are all kinds of post, lamp, the light posts and pipes and stuff stored there. Now, this was because, I think we needed it because we didn't have that superb facility down on Access Road. But now we have plenty of room on Access Road, inside and outside, and it could be that we have a different kind of use in that part of town. The use for the, before, we had the biggest crowd for the swimming pool meets in the summer, but now we have walking trails existing, future walking trails along the Nupontet in the New Park area. We have new work, new work, business going on at the Space Center. And so I'd like to ask the board if we could, first of all, if you think it's a good idea that we look into this, and then if we did it the old-fashioned way, if we ask the people in the neighborhood how they feel about it, about having the change of use from light department storage area to town of Norwood public parking area, for the schools, for the ball fields, for the trails, for the pool, and the Space Center, and, and if the people around it don't have an objection to it, then maybe we could look into it and see about getting it built.
I think the first thing before we consider the neighborhood input and so forth is, is it practical? Can we do it?
Right.
When we built the new facility on 36 Access Road, unfortunately, that was the one thing that we couldn't find a way to accommodate, and that's why it's still there. We can reexamine that, take one further look, as you're suggesting, see if we can't come up with a newer, better answers now, especially that they're down there. But originally, that didn't happen because of, you know, they did close the Chapel Street, Washington Street, and now the facilities department's using that, except for the storage of the outside larger transformers. The smaller transformers are down at 136 Access Road. So I'm a little skeptical that we're going to be successful, but I don't think that means we shouldn't reexamine it and see if we can possibly do something. I just don't want to get your hopes up because it started off that we didn't have a way to move those items, at least down to Access Road. So we'll take a look, Mr. Manager, and see if we can reexamine that with the administration.
Do you think it's a good idea to look into it?
Sure. Absolutely. It's worth looking into, because you're right. We anticipated that some of that space would be needed, but we've now been in Access Road for almost a year. I think it's time to bring it back up, look at what the use is, and it's now become such a low-use parcel that maybe there is something else we can do for it. Additional public parking for that area, I think, would be great if we can, if we can do it. So if you want to give me some time, what I can do is get together with the light department team, and we can come up and look at a couple of options, and talk in a few weeks about what some of the challenges would be and what some of the opportunities are, but it's absolutely great to look into it.
So ask the manager to look at that and see where it goes.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. That'd really be great. A couple of other nice things. Today is Russ Federico's 103rd birthday, and the whole town of Norwood celebrated for him. Carrie McCarthy and her wonderful group of people at the senior center put together a parade. There were over six to seven police cruisers in it, and Ellen Reyno in the senior citizens van, and the fire department, and went past, went to Russ's house. And he is a wonderful individual, and Russ, happy 103rd birthday. He's fine, and he's in good health, and he's got a very kind heart. We love him. The last thing that I would like to do is to thank that every year we put the creche. It used to be on the vault school lawn, now it's on the Morse House lawn, and every year we have kind people who put it up, all volunteers, headed up by Michael Sad and Carlos Nev, Bob McDonald, Fred Cannon, and Dan Kelly. So they're the, they're the people behind the scenes that get everything done, and wind, rain, or snow, thank you. And thank you very much for the help with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anything additional, Mr. Hajar?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to wish everybody in town a Happy New Year. Hope they had a safe, safe holiday, and while they may not have been able to attend grandiose parties as they have in the past, we hope that they, they still enjoyed whatever they, they did. Two questions, Mr. Chairman. So I, I do want to suggest that we have a discussion about free cash in.
Free cash?
Yes, free cash. So we know there is a lot of money in there, and we're halfway through the fiscal year, and I'm just wondering if there should be a more pronounced plan on what we want to do with pieces of the free cash. We know we're not going to go through it all, and there are some parts that we may want to put elsewhere. I didn't know if that's the job of the Budget Balancing Subcommittee, or is that a separate discussion we want to have with others to say, okay, do we actually have a plan that says this is what we can do with some of that excess money? Because it is pretty substantial.
Well, making a, making a plan, I suppose, would start with the administration making a recommendation, and the board and support, and then working through any other committees that have input. For example, I'd like to hold on to as much of it as possible, because it affects our bond rating, and bond agents look at that a lot, how, how much cash we have available. But that may not be practical. There may be some things we need to do. We can't go backwards. We have to stay progressive. So that takes some evaluation. Maybe we could ask the manager to look at that, and in a couple weeks or a few weeks, however long you think it takes, make some recommendations. And once we get those recommendations, that'll start our discussion. We can go from there.
We certainly can. The, the only two caveats I would say, point out is, we have a higher-than-average amount of free cash, because we held a lot over, and we did sort of tell town meeting that if things look good, and we don't know what state aid is going to look like, we don't know what health insurance is going to go up. We have our pension number, which is always that first sort of budget number, that first, we would look to make sure we can balance the budget, because we're anticipating local receipts completely flat, and state aid may be flat. Now, we could be wrong, and state aid could bounce back. We also did say we would want to possibly spend more cash on capital next fall than we usually did to offset the fact that we borrowed more this year. So that's a long way of saying, absolutely, Mr. Chairman, we can do that. We're waiting on that first early state aid number, which usually comes out later in the month, to see, are we looking at maybe a big increase? Are we looking at flat? Could the governor cut state aid to cities and towns? That's always possible. That'll determine sort of where our offset is, and then I think that discussion will be appropriate. I think everyone in the administration would certainly like to see more of that money moved into stabilization and making sure that we're conservatively taking a look at it.
That worked. You got this started.
That's fine, but just, let's not confuse the fact about going into the next fiscal year, because once this fiscal year ends, we can't spend free cash until it gets recertified.
In the fall.
In the fall. So free cash is going to be recertified. It will take care of, hopefully, whatever borrowing or free cash utilization for capital or anything else. I'm talking about the millions that are there now, between now and the end of this fiscal year. I too want to hang on to it, or put it in different reserves to try to ensure to raise our amounts that we're actually showing, and not just keep it in free cash, which everyone knows can go pretty quickly. So I agree with you, but I don't want to mix, mix fiscal year this year with, with next year, which is going to have its own separate number.
Yeah, and it could be free cash. It could be spent on something. It could be, put it in stabilization funds.
Yes.
Any number of suggestions could come from that.
Yes, absolutely.
But let's start with a, let's start with a presentation from administration, and that will give us something to respond to and work towards.
Thank you, thank you.
Is that more for everyone? Thank you. If you've put that on your list, Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
My second item was Parker Parks.
Parker Parks.
Okay, so I know we had a long list of potentials that the last board sort of really couldn't come to consensus on exactly which ones we want to potentially look at. I'm suggesting that there might be a couple that we might be able to have consensus on. Is it possible to bring that up for discussion at a future meeting? I'm not saying next week, obviously, but at a future meeting to see if there are one or two that we may be able to build upon and say, even if we stop there, it's worth pursuing.
Sure, absolutely. Let us know. The manager brought that up before. He can obviously bring it up on his agenda as he does weekly, or if an individual member like yourself would like to promote it. You have one or two, or three, whatever it is that you think are appropriate. Let me know. We'll put it on an agenda when you're going to be ready, so the board has a little advance notice. And if you have any kind of backup information put together, we can include that in the packet as well.
Will do, thank you.
Sure, that's, that's fine for discussion.
Okay.
Won't go anywhere, but it's fine.
[laughing]
I'm kidding. Mr. Maloney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question on that, though. Didn't we approve, Mr. Mazuko, didn't we authorize you to go ahead with that, that wedge-shaped piece of land at Morse and Howard Streets?
Howard Street.
I think, I think we said, it's, it actually is a little park right now. And I think probably a year and a half, maybe two years ago, we, anyway.
I think we could do with that.
I think I shrugged our shoulders and said, it is what it is already.
Yeah. I mean, it would be a matter of putting a bench or a couple of benches there.
We did not formally adopt anything. I looked back at the notes. We didn't approve, specifically approve anything.
Right, and I think, I think was because we thought, what can you do with it?
Yeah, I think to Mr. Hajar's point, the way to approach it would be, there might be some of these lots that, you know, let's just put it up there, let the board decide. Here's sort of the three options, and if you choose either of these options, here's what we would do next. And then sort of either say, yes, let's advance this and go to this stage, or no, you know what, we're not interested in taking any action on it, and it effectively dies that time of year. Rather than looking at four or five at once, I think we take them one at a time over a course of time, because if we were going to look at two or three lots in different neighborhoods and try to get the neighbors involved and say, what does everyone think, or hold a hearing on it for discussions, it's better to try to take them one at a time than say, well, let's do four at a time.
Right.
Okay?
Good.
But sure, just give me a notice, we'll put it on an agenda and work on that.
The one at East Oil Street looks great.
Yes.
It does.
That came out awesome.
Looked really good.
East Oil and Washington, yep.
Anything else? Mr. Lane, Mr. Maloney, we all set? Chairman's all set? Next week we will have a meeting, still to be determined where or how, and intended, if nothing else comes up that we necessarily have to deal with, the Tuesday, the 20th, I guess it is, or whatever. It's the, the following week we will plan to take off. Take the motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous? Thank you very much.